Meeting of the Select Board on August 15th, 6:01 PM is called to order. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? Seeing none, okay. I will just note for the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. Next, Pledge of Allegiance, if you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes. You ready to proceed?
Ready.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated August 1st, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is discussion and potential vote to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on certain streets within the Town of Hingham under Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, and Article 25 of the 2022 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting. JR Fry, Town Engineer with us, and do we have Sergeant Kilry?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Do you want to kick us off, JR?
Sure. Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity. As we are all aware, in, at the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, the Town voted to accept the language of Section 17C, Chapter 90, which gave the Select Board the authority upon the recommendation of the Traffic Committee to establish 25 mile-per-hour speed limits in thickly settled areas of Hingham. The Traffic Committee adopted a policy that, to also further clarify which streets would, which streets should be eligible for the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. We initially started this off earlier this summer with the Downtown Business District, encompassing North Street, South Street, a portions of Central, Main, Lincoln Street, and Fearing Road. And I am here now with several figures depicting additional streets where the Traffic Committee has voted to recommend to the Select Board that the establishment of 25 mile-per-hour speed limit is appropriate. Are there any questions before we jump in?
Well, just to clarify, so the Town Meeting vote was for thickly settled or business districts?
Correct, yes.
And obviously, there was a limitation that it cannot be a state highway?
So, beginning, are we sharing?
Yes.
Okay. I also want to make a note, this isn't, this, the selected streets that the Traffic Committee voted on is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of streets. So this is something that can and should expand as residents come forward to make specific requests. In, not in all cases will their requests be granted, but this isn't intended to be the final list. What we looked to prioritize at that time were streets that may have more of a tendency for cut-through traffic, which generates higher speeds because the drivers do not have a destination within that neighborhood. So, we were looking for anything that might end up generating more cut-through traffic and things like that. Where, where you also were already targeting a particular neighborhood, and there might be a cul-de-sac off of that, well, we don't want to orphan any of those shorter streets, so those were adopted in as well. That assists the police by having a consistent, a consistent law within a particular area. So that way enforcement becomes much simpler for them. And they don't have to be worried about, well, was, you know, was this cul-de-sac passed or not? For cul-de-sacs coming off main roads, as we address those going forward, there will be signage, so if somebody enters a neighborhood and is speeding, they will have been forewarned, and it, the police will have clear authority to issue a ticket.
Can I just ask a question about the, if you can expand a little bit, JR, on the rationale? Did you look at neighborhoods or streets that citizens have raised concerns about? Or what, maybe high accident areas, high accident-prone areas? Was that part of the process?
As a general rule, yes. Fortunately, there are not, I would say there are not a lot of neighborhoods that have a high incidence of accidents, so that's good.
Yes.
But we absolutely looked at neighborhoods where we've gotten numerous complaints, where we've had to address neighborhood concerns regarding whether or not striping, for example, affects, affects the speed of a driver. Neighborhoods where we frequently are bringing the speed monitoring trailer, or where we've done one or more speed studies to review what the actual conditions are. So, those, those were all high on the list as well. And then, the other element that we haven't directly discussed yet is that we targeted local streets for this. So those are streets which have a Mass. Dot functional classification of local, and it generally provides that streets which are local have a residential or destination quality versus a collector street or an arterial street, which are connecting neighborhoods, connecting communities, connecting municipalities to interstate highway, for example.
Okay, great.
Okay, so with that said, we will jump in with this first selection of streets. The first one incorporates the Bradley Woods neighborhood in its entirety. It also includes Topelo Road and Langley Road on the north side of 3A. And on the south side of 3A, it includes Bulow. Bulow Road and Bulow Place. And I don't know if the intention of the Select Board is to review these on an individual basis, comment, and make suggestions based on the figure? Or if you just wanted me to go through all 13 figures? I have a feeling that in the course of going through 13 figures, you may want to make comments.
Yes. I think it would be helpful to review all of them, just so residents know what neighborhoods we're talking about and what specific streets. But certainly, if my colleagues have questions about a specific figure, we'll, we'll interrupt you, so.
Okay, yes, great.
JR? It would be helpful, to the extent that you received comments from neighbors in these communities, if you, that you could share them with us?
Sure, I, I mean, I know I did receive some comments from neighbors in the Bradley Woods neighborhood. More of those comments actually came during our discussion of the National Grid Gas Main Installation. But, and, you know, all of that relates to the same types of concerns. Narrowness of streets, accessibility, but at the same time, safety for the residents, and most importantly, their children.
Since you're grouping the, the figures by neighborhood, for example, the Bradley Woods neighborhood, the Bradley Parks neighborhood, Bradley Park neighborhood, the Crow Point neighborhood, I don't know if you have to go into, you know, specific detail. I mean, everybody knows Bradley Woods, Bradley Woods Drive, Holly Street, Sycamore, Crow Point, Park Circle, so maybe, maybe just go through the figures and why you're making recommendations about that neighborhood and those street, and accompanying streets, opposed to each individual street? I mean, my recommendation.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So, knowing that, people might observe, and this brings up a kind of a good opportunity to just address it right at the front. Conditto Road, Lincoln Street, and Fattler Road are all examples of roads which would not be included in, under our policy. Conditto Road is a private road, so it is not Town-accepted. Lincoln Street, this portion of Lincoln Street, where it is 3A, is state highway layout, so that is controlled entirely by the state. And Fattler Road is a collector street. So Fattler has a higher volume of traffic by design and intention, and therefore, we would not lower the speed on that. Rather, we would maintain its existing capacity for travel.
And what is the existing speed limit there?
30 miles an hour.
Okay, so, we're not talking about 45?
Correct.
Okay.
There are some locations in town, for example, certain portions of Main Street do have 40 and 45 mile-per-hour speed limits. Those are all regulatory speed limits, so they were set through a, an engineering process that determined what the safe speed for that section of roadway is. And that is another selection of streets, or sections of streets, where we are not permitted to attempt to re-establish a different, a different speed limit. Okay, so continuing, we can go to Figure 2. Figure 2 encompasses Crow Point. We'll call it from Wampatuck at the west end to Marion Street and the Governor, and the Governor's Streets, Governors Andrew and Long. Downer Ave. and Otis Street are both collector streets, which is why they are not included. There is a, an unimproved section of Grove Avenue, which is private, but the improved section of Grove Avenue is a public way, and that is incorporated into this. Okay, we can continue to Figure 3, unless there are questions. This closes out the Crow Point neighborhoods, beginning with the section on Otis Hill Road, and it also incorporates Crow Point Lane. Bradley Park, we have the Bradley Park neighborhood. We have the roads, I believe they're kind of a condo association, but they're along a public way. And we've got Bradley Hill Road and Bremer Circle on the other end. Okay, Figure 5. We did a central portion of this area through the downtown, through the establishment of the Downtown Business District. This kind of completes that loop. It'll reduce a little bit some of the signage that is needed by kind of closing the loop on these neighborhoods. And it, and as I was mentioning before, it prevents orphanage of any street. So, all of those streets that connect into the Downtown Business District will be incorporated in that. That goes from Green Street over to Burditt Avenue. This is the World's End area. It also includes Canterbury Street, which sees, which actually sees a significant amount of cut-through traffic. We had complaints before, during, and after paving Canterbury Street and the, the issues with that. And there are, hopefully, additional improvements we can make at some point, but that was an important one to include because of the frequency and, in reality, the factual nature that it is such a cut-through street. And there you have Cherry Street and Weir Street. Okay, this is, I'll call it the Southern Downtown area. So these are streets off of Hershey Street, off of Central Street, and off of Main Street. Generally, the Elm, Emerald Thayer area that we just paved, Elm in particular does see quite a bit of cut-through traffic. And similarly, Rockwood Road connecting 3A and 228 does not see a lot of cut-through traffic because it's such a windy road, and so people don't get routed that way unless there's an issue on 228 or 3A, in which case people will use that as a cut-through.
So is Water Street on your list?
So a portion of Water Street is actually already part of the Downtown Business District. I did share at one point, but then I brought up the wrong figure when we were reviewing it in Traffic Committee. A separate indication that, basically, when I went out and looked in the field, the amount of signage on the lower portion of Water Street, where it's residential, it would be confusing to drivers and to the police for enforcement purposes to be enforcing a 30 mile-per-hour district through a short section of Water Street, and then enforcing a 25 mile-per-hour district within Business District. Because I didn't present it to the Traffic Committee, I will be bringing that up at the next Traffic Committee meeting for presentation to you.
I mean, Water Street, people on Main going to 3A, that's what they're taking?
Yes, absolutely. No, I'm well aware of it, and I'm going to address it shortly.
Great, okay, thank you.
Continuing down, we've got the Turkey Hill and Library and High School neighborhoods. So Levitt Street is a big chunk of that. You'll notice that Turkey Hill is only portionally included, and that is because as you advance into the rural portion of Turkey Hill Lane, where it's conservation land and farmland, it no longer meets the thickly settled requirement. So it is not appropriate to apply the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit there. There may be other reasons, but it, by law, that's what we can do. So, people might notice, we have Middle Street, a portion of Pleasant Street, and Union Street continuing south around the High School, those are not included. Those are all collector streets, and therefore, were not included under our policy. The, with that said, I will take this opportunity to mention that we are in the process of evaluating the intersection of Middle Street, Main Street, and South Street to try and identify intersection improvements to make that corridor safer. So that's a big step that is already, we're working, we're hoping to see progress in that. A design soon, actual construction, hopefully, also soon. So continuing. Okay, we're working off of some High Street neighborhoods here, as well as at the bottom end of Union Street, where we go to Lizell Street. So the High Street neighborhoods that we're looking at here, Stanford Drive, Harvard Drive, as well as Whitcomb Avenue. And then, on the other side, Lizell Street has long been identified by the Police Department as a concern due to the geometry of the, of the street, vertical curvature, horizontal curvature. Both of those combined, along with street trees in close proximity to the roadway, it resulted in relatively high incidence of accidents, and, and it's appropriate to reduce the speed there for that reason.
Can I just ask a question about that Figure 9? Tower Road, I see, was not included. Is that because it's not a cut-through?
Yes, but it is certainly eligible, and I, the Traffic Committee would not have any objection to including that in the next round. Continuing, now, actually, we bumped up just a hair north here. We've got Tower Brook Road, so these are streets off of Cross Street. Tower Brook Road, Myers Farm Road, Turrasi Road, and Paolo Road. We were also looking at what is colloquially known as Old Cross Street. However, Old Cross Street is, remains a portion of Cross Street as laid out and accepted by the Town. So I am speaking with council, trying to determine if we can have two different speed limits within the same alignment of a roadway. They're effectively driveways, but it's, there are also some other physical things that we might do for, for the purpose of traffic calming, but we haven't engineered those yet.
Are you talking about Cross Street where it intersects with Hobart?
No, Cross Street where, that also is a section, but that, I have no concerns with the speed, and that actually, I think mostly ends up being someplace for the school buses to stop and wait. But I'm, I'm talking about the old Cross Street where it, it intersects Turrasi Road, but it provides frontage for several homes. And where Cross Street was originally constructed, it's their driveway access. Now, what it currently exists is basically kind of a slip lane. If you're coming south on Cross Street, you've basically got a slip lane into Turrasi Road. So your entry speed on what is effectively a driveway is fully 30 or 35, realistically, miles an hour. And then you kindly slow down right before you get to Turrasi to make an actual right-hand turn. So one of the things that we might end up doing...
Someone making a right-hand turn at 30 miles an hour is going to have a lot of problems.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So just reduce the whole thing to 25?
Well, we wouldn't reduce Cross Street because it's a collector, not the main drag on Cross Street. But what we would do is change how the access is achieved onto those driveways to make it, instead of a slip lane, to make it an actual right turn. So that if you wanted to make that turn, you'd have to slow down within Cross Street proper, make a right turn, and then you could calmly go about your day and keep your neighbors at peace. So, these are some streets south of Prospect. It's the Scotland Street neighborhood that's generally accessible from Scotland Street. It includes Polk Road, Palmer's Lane, Liberty Road, and continuing east back toward, back into that wooded area. It also includes Long Meadow Road, where we have long had issues with cut-throughs from Prospect Street over to Main Street. And not just cut-throughs, but high-speed cut-throughs, frustratingly. Again, Prospect is one of those streets that is designated a collector, along with Charles Street. It's basically carrying a lot of Norwell traffic to and from. Liberty Pole, enough said.
Can't get out of that place.
We don't know what you're talking about.
No, it isn't.
Other 13?
Yeah.
So is it every road in Liberty Pole?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
It is. It is every road in Liberty Pole. It also adds a few more streets off of Prospect Street.
Herndon is listed.
Herndon is there.
Yeah.
Right here.
Let's see.
I'll go and make a go.
Okay. It's not sharing that, is it?
It doesn't look like the whole thing's highlighted, but it's on the list.
Yeah, it's right here, the vote list.
Yep. Okay. Let me just pull up the last.
Yes, that's the last one. So, and this is the last one, it includes what is colloquially known as Upper Gardner. So it's the portion of Gardner that runs from the Rockland Line to Whiting Street, Route 53, and Derby Street at that five-way intersection. It also includes, and it includes all the associated streets within those neighborhoods there. We did, during the Traffic Committee meeting, have questions about the other side of Gardner, Lower Gardner. Lower Gardner is designated a collector street, primarily because it is drawing traffic between 228 and 53. As I spoke to the resident that addressed it through some emails, and she understood the policy and why we implemented it the way we did, and would just like us to consider additional alternatives, be they physical, police presence, or other, that we may be able to improve traffic conditions on their street.
Okay, so we don't have the, the names of these roads on the vote list, do we?
I just asked Sharon to print copies of this last one. It's just missing from the packet.
Okay.
Oh, that one doesn't, there they are.
Oh, there they are, sorry.
They're not on the vote list.
So, once again, I'll reiterate, this is a first cut. It was, I tried to be thorough about it, but at the same time, I couldn't, we're in the middle of paving season, and I only have so many hours in any given day.
Excellent, thank you. Joe, do you want to ask any questions?
Just a couple, but thank you for this work. This is not easy, it's a lot of attention to detail, so I really appreciate everything you've done. Have you received any comments with people saying, "No, don't do this", that they don't think it's appropriate to include whatever street on your list?
The only comment that we received, and it was a good one that came up in Traffic Committee, was a question about how well this was publicized, and were people properly notified about it? And I had to rely on the fact that we do regularly publicize... And I had to rely on the fact that we do regularly publicize our traffic committee meetings when we have them, but we also had a town meeting vote, which, and the vote itself had broad unanimous support. And we've also been discussing these at the select board meetings. So while, while we did not, for example, distribute a flyer to every resident that would live on one of these impacted streets, we're relying on that prior communication and notification as well as a general understanding that there is broad favorability for this policy.
But were your meetings publicly noticed on the town website and also through email?
They, yes, they are broadcast on email.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think that's consistent with how most meetings of town committees are noticed. But getting back to my question, did you receive any comments saying, "Don't do this"?
No.
Okay, great. And to what extent, if we take action this evening, are these decisions reversible? So we designate a street as twenty-five miles per hour and then two years from now, we say, "You know, that was foolish, we want to change it." Do you know, do we have the authority to change that?
Certainly.
I think we do, I just wanted, I didn't know if you had any-
I, the legislation, or the language of the statute-
Yep.
Doesn't, I don't think it would anticipate a reversal because of the nature of the change and that this was, when the statute was enacted, it was broadly from municipal pressure-
Sure.
-on the legislature to do something like this.
So, I mean, just for example, so the statute refers to thickly settled?
Yes.
So if it turns out three years from now, an area is no longer thickly settled, would it be at least within our authority, perhaps even automatically removed since it no longer qualifies?
It's an interesting question of law.
We have a professor here who might be able to, finally. So, I mean, we're making, we will be making our decisions based on the current situation.
Yes.
But if circumstances change, my assumption is that-
When circumstances change undoubtedly, that would be the case. For example, you could have wholesale redevelopment of a significant tract of property that would change the nature and character of that entire area.
To what extent did you solicit input from the schools? Or did you receive input from the schools? Or did you take into consideration the proximity of these streets to schools when you were making the assessments?
It was not something that was strictly considered, other than to the extent that, in the same way that we were getting comments, most of the comments related to speed and neighborhoods, "Well, my kids walk to school."
Right.
And so, to that extent, that's where it was considered, but it was not so much strictly related to proximity of schools. For example, I think, I don't believe East Gate Lane was included on the original list. There's no reason it shouldn't be, East School is right there, so that would certainly be one that would be in the next round.
I'd encourage you to solicit input from the schools, just-
Okay.
-so that we, we're not missing something that may be obvious to those who, day-to-day have their kids walking to school. Great. No other questions, thank you.
I'm gonna turn to Bill in a second, just to follow on that, if there is signage that it's five or fifteen miles per hour because it is near a school, I'm assuming that would stay, right? I think there's a portion-
School zones are handled under Section eighteen-
Okay.
-of the, of Chapter ninety, and yes, a school zone as established is not revoked by this.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Bill.
So JR, thank you so much for your great work here. You know, I couldn't be happier with these recommendations. This is something I've been pushing for, for a while now. I spent ten years on the traffic committee. Almost every meeting, we would have residents come in and ask us to do something about speed. Speed, 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 and sometimes signage. At the time, we couldn't do anything because of thirty mile an hour, thickly settled law. So when the legislature allowed this, allowed towns to do this, I was on the board, my first year on the board, town meeting adopted the ability to reduce to twenty-five miles an hour. It was frustrating for me that we couldn't take action sooner. Obviously, there was some litigation involved where we couldn't do that. That's been resolved now and I'm really thrilled to be doing this. Some of these streets, personally, I'd reduce to twenty if we could, because there are streets where you have very young families, very young children, elderly residents, and speed is a very, very dangerous thing. Just to go over a couple, a couple points that you made, because I know a lot of residents are gonna be contacting us and saying, "Why not my, why not my street?" Which is something I'd probably be doing. But you said, roads that were excluded were private roads, obviously. Roads that are either defined as state highways or are part and parcel of state highways, correct?
Yes.
And roads that you define as collector streets that are already thirty miles per hour.
Yes.
Can you just talk a little more about what you kind, what the committee defined as a collector street?
So we relied on Mast Dot's functional classification. So Mast Dot maintains a database of all roads in the Commonwealth, and they apply a functional classification to each of those, not just to each road, but to individual roadway segments. And so, what would be a good example, Lizelle Street, a portion of it is two-twenty-eight, and so is an arterial road. But once you turn and go past the library, it becomes a local road. And so, at that point, we have the authority and we are taking the authority to establish that portion of Lizelle Street as a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. But the other portion would not apply under our policy because it is a collector street. And I think it's also, I think that's also a regulated speed zone to boot.
And I was also very happy to hear you say, this was kind of, obviously, we started two months ago with north-south high pedestrian area. We're here tonight, and you're gonna continue to add streets as the committee deems appropriate, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you also for looking at the Middle Street intersection. I don't want to go too far afield of our discussion tonight, but that Middle Street, Main Street intersection, we've had some significant motor vehicle crashes there, as you know. So I'm glad the committee's looking at that. I'd encourage you to also look at the intersection of High, French, and Ward. That's also probably the second, maybe the second most dangerous intersection in town. So thank you for doing that. And lastly, I do see Sergeant Kilroy has joined us, so I wanted to recognize his good work on this initiative as well. So, thank you Sergeant Kilroy. And again, thanks for, thanks for your work here JR, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Well, thank you JR. I know, just to echo my colleague's comments, this was a tremendous amount of work and we appreciate it. This is certainly a high priority for us and we've, I've only heard from residents that they want lower speed limits, so, and I'm certainly encouraged that it passed in 2022 overwhelmingly at town meetings. So I think, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. So thank you to you and thank you Sergeant Kilroy. I will open it up to public comment. We do have a long agenda, so I'll ask you to be brief, but certainly if there are members in the public that want to comment or ask questions, can raise your hand in the room or online. Is there anybody? No? Okay, I don't see any. Do you feel ready to vote?
I do, but I just want to add one other comment, which is, several times JR, you mentioned that the speed limit is just one tool in your toolkit, and there are other aspects that you are looking at, other things that can be done, traffic calming measures, various options. So this is an important step, but it's not the only step that we will be looking at.
Absolutely.
But I am prepared to vote.
Okay.
Thanks.
Bill, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. I'm prepared to take a motion.
So I'm gonna make the motion, but I'm gonna be referring to the list.
Okay.
So, I move to accept the recommendation of the traffic committee and establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour in the following areas of Hingham as described on the attached sheets and on the attached maps, titled Section seventeen C Streets dated August tenth and August thirteenth, 2023, under Mass General Law's Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C, and Article twenty-five of the twenty-two Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting. So these streets and references are for Figure One Streets, Figure Two Streets, Figures Three Streets, Figure Four Streets, Figure Five Streets, Figure Six Streets, Figure Seven R One Streets, Figure Eight R One Streets, Figure Nine Streets, Figure Ten Streets, Figure Eleven Streets, and Figure Twelve Streets, all as designated on the attached sheets.
And thirteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, and thirteen streets. That would be Figure Thirteen Streets.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you JR.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for walking us through that.
My pleasure.
Yes, and special thanks to the whole traffic committee.
We do not need to do roll calls since we're all here.
Oh, we're all here. We don't have to.
We don't, right. Are we gonna talk about downtown? Okay.
Sure.
I thought that was, yeah, I've asked him about it a couple times, so, okay.
Yes, so, we've had-
Sixty-day deadline is up, go.
Obviously, the select board made special attention of other traffic calming measures that might be appropriate within downtown. Among those, we would look to enhance traffic's, pedestrian safety for people that are walking around the downtown, as well as general traffic calming to reduce the speed of traffic that is not destination-oriented while they're in downtown, but they're moving through. So, among the options that may be possible, the, one of the primary ones that we would look at is additional, or, and additional RRFB, which is a rectangular rapid flash beacon. We've already installed several of those on Route two-twenty-eight as well as in front of Plymouth River Elementary School, but we would be looking to put one at the crosswalk between Hennessy's and the post office primarily. So that's, it's kind of a traffic calming tool, but it's primarily a driver notification tool, and once drivers are properly notified that a pedestrian is waiting to cross, the vast majority will stop and allow the pedestrian to cross safely. The RRFB, it's been found to increase driver compliance with laws related to yielding the right-of-way to pedestrians in crosswalks. It's been found to increase driver compliance with that by as much as eighty percent. So it's an effective tool, so that is one tool that we would look at. But we would also look at, for example, the possibility of speed tables, if that's appropriate. An example of locations for speed tables would be where we don't have a all-way stop-controlled intersection, so you have at least one or two directions of traffic that are free-flowing. So those locations might be the South Street and North Street intersection, or the intersection at North Street and Station Street. We would want to evaluate these, whether they would work in conjunction with one another. We'd also want to make sure that, for example, Mill Street might be a bad location for doing it because you're too close to three A, and you'd be impacting the traffic at that intersection with a speed table that's off the intersection. So, but with that said, speed tables are another option. We can also look at adjusting some traffic patterns, expanding, one thing that we're actively looking at now is traffic around Fountain Square at the Lincoln Memorial, and determining if there are safer, more effective travel patterns, both for drivers and pedestrians, to navigate that area. As part of that, I'm also looking to install, at some point in the future, additional sidewalk within there, so we'd be increasing the amount of pedestrian accommodations in that corridor. Another element that we might look at, although it hasn't been fully flushed out, but it was kind of brought up as a spitball, would be changing the entire traffic pattern within downtown. You could possibly limit north, a portion of North Street to one way. South Street would be one way the other direction. Where there's already a current portion of it that's one way, you could expand that to Central Street. That, by limiting it to one way, we, you would be increasing your area that could either accommodate parking or pedestrian facilities, and both of those elements would also serve to calm traffic because there's a lot more antagonistic movement towards a free-flowing traffic. It would, it helps that there are, that we currently have two four-way controlled stops on South Street already. So those kind of limit the free-flowing movement regardless, but this would cut down even on somebody gunning it from South Main, Central to South Main at Main and then slamming on the brakes. Do you have other ideas or suggestions that you'd like to-
Yeah, so just on Sunday night, I was driving through a neighboring community, I think I sent you a photo of it-
Mm-hmm.
...and my son took it, I was driving the car. So, but it was a rather long intersection, street, pretty busy area, and as I approached it, all of a sudden, a beacon on my, my side flashed to let me know that there was a person across the street looking to cross. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a large sign, it wasn't a subtle sign, I mean, sorry, it wasn't anything that was like, you know, crazy blinking light, it was very much, "Hey, there's somebody looking across the street." Something like that, that would not disturb the historical character of our downtown, but would increase pedestrian safety at the crosswalk by the post office?
Yep.
By the old Hennessy, I always call it Hennessy's, but you know, post that, where you have cars parked and people, residents come out of those areas, it's very dangerous, even going twenty-five. The crosswalk that takes you from Brew to Wakenings across Main that runs parallel to South might be a good spot for that, and maybe the one on the other side of the street. We, I don't think we need them all over downtown, but if we can put them up strategically, that will create a culture amongst drivers who traverse that area, you know, frequently to slow down, to look for pedestrians. So what I'm looking for is something, again, that will be aligned with our historical downtown, that will not, you know, look out of place or kind of disrupt that, but something that's going to protect pedestrians as they cross on those crosswalks. When you were here in June, and I mentioned some of these suggestions to you, the next day, a merchant came up to me and said, "Hey, the PD was just at my establishment." I go, "What for?" He said, "They needed camera footage, somebody got hit by a car last night as they were walking across, you know, my, the street, on North Street." It's, you know, as I said- It's, you know, as I said earlier, their children have been hit at that crosswalk, a very young child was hit, maybe about two years ago, and I'd like to see us move quicker toward implementing something. I, I kind of feel like we're talking about it a lot, and that's a good thing, but as I kind of said in June, we need to do what we just did. A defined plan for what we're going to do in these areas to make them safer. So that's, that's all I've got.
So what are the next steps, JR? Will the Traffic Committee, is this on the next agenda, or is it on kind of your radar for the next?
I think, depending on the specifics, but where you're, where you're looking to implement physical changes sooner rather than later, the types of signage and beacons are simpler to implement, and on the scale of things, more affordable, so those pieces might be able to be moved sooner. Something more significant that would require some combination of planning, engineering study, surveying, to make sure that the, for example, one of the issues with speed tables is you have to make sure that the drainage is going to work. You have to reconfigure all of your, you know, when these roads were built, the crosswalks at those locations were built for ADA accessibility with a depressed road. Well, now you've got to reconstruct everything for ADA accessibility with an elevated road. So, we just have to go through all of those engineering steps to make sure that we can, if we're going to construct something, that it's something that will work with all of our infrastructure.
Understood. I, I think maybe what we're asking is the next Traffic Committee agenda, if we can add looking at the, at least the beacons at the crosswalks as, that may be an interim solution, it may end up being enough, but that sounds like that's the most immediate solution that we can, can come to.
The Traffic Committee can certainly take it up.
Can I ask another?
Yeah.
I mean, another suggestion too, JR, is maybe come in with, and show residents what these different systems look like, what they entail, how they operate. I'm sure if you, if you approached Andrea and say, hey, how would this look in that area historically, I mean, is it gonna, is it gonna, gonna fit in? She would work with you, Emily would work with you as well, and then maybe come in and do a presentation to us on the different options, and then we can get some feedback from residents, and maybe, you know, within weeks of that, we can maybe move to implement. That might be a business suggestion as well. So people can see what these, you know, what they, how they work, how they operate, how easy or difficult they might be to install.
Are you referring to a similar solution to what we have on Main Street at a few different crosswalks?
Well, that's what I'm familiar with, and what, it sounds like, from what Bill is saying, that there was something of a, in, in terms of the light activation, or the light notification, it was a little more subtle than what I've described as a rectangular rapid flash beacon, which is quite bright and alternating flashing.
It was a lot less subtle than that, yes. I'm familiar with the one on High Street.
Yeah.
By Plymouth River, I'm familiar with the one on Main. There was less subtle, which is wondering, wondering if that might be a better fit.
More subtle.
I'm sorry, my apologies, more subtle.
Understood.
But it was, it was just three lights, but definitely caught my attention. And as soon as they went on, you know, my eyes went, I stopped my car, left, and I saw someone was trying to get across the street.
Okay.
And that's when I said to my son, quick, take a picture of that. I go, actually, video, and I was going to JR tonight, and that's why I sent you an email on Sunday night. So.
Thank you.
No, and this is a very helpful discussion. I think, I, I think I share my colleagues' desire to have a schedule set for this, that it doesn't have, we, we need the, we need discussion, but we need to have action items and sort of dates when things are going to happen. So, you may see on our agenda coming up perhaps, you know, a request for a report on the next step. Because I'm not aware of any legal restriction, I think you've got the budget to do this. I think socializing it with historic and perhaps residents, just to make sure we're not missing something, and you may say, this is not effective, or you may say, this is likely to be effective, so we need that input as well. And we're not looking to go down a path that ultimately, in your professional judgment, you would discourage us from going, so, so please speak up and just make sure that we're going along the right path, but we do want to move along that path and not just sit here. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, JR. Excellent, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for Summer Send-Off, to be held at World's End on Saturday, August 26, 2023, with a rain date of Sunday, August 27, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I think I saw Ann, Smith White.
And Rich.
And Rich. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Liz, if, excuse me.
So, I'm from Vitamin C Brewing, my name's Rich Stavanna. We have a event that the trustees are putting on at World's End.
Rich, can I just interrupt you one second, sorry?
I just gonna, maybe we should begin with asking Tom why this is before the board and not with you.
Sure, it's, the, the limit you guys gave me was a 200-person limit.
Right.
Per event is an estimated 1,000 to 1,200.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Sorry, Rich, go ahead.
So, it's a no-go event at World's End, family-friendly event, there'll be music by a Bob Marley tribute band, it's going to be free food, and there's ice cream vendor, and we're up for a one-day license so that we can set up and serve craft beer and seltzers and things like that to the crowd.
Excellent. Ann, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, that's it, that's the plan.
Okay, excellent, and I know, you've done this event before. I don't see a, like, a parking plan or anything, but I'm assuming that's, that's been worked out?
That's right, this is our second Tier 1 event. I usually have a conversation with Sergeant Hillrod in advance to talk about what kind of police detail we need. This is a smaller event than the summer seltiffs, which we typically do at the end of June, but very similar, we'll be parking on the hill, lots and lots of staff directing traffic and supporting them. And, yeah, and it should be an earlier night, too, because the sun setting is earlier.
Yes, excellent, and I see that it was signed off by Chief Jones?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Joe, do you have any other questions?
Well, I was going to ask more about the Bob Marley tribute band, but I'm, I'm not sure that that's going to affect our decision. I know, I, I think this is a great event, really appreciate the work that's going into it, and looking forward to it. No questions.
Excellent. Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
All right, excellent, I'm ready to take a motion. Oh, public comment. Do any members of the public have questions or comments? Okay, seeing none.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Vitamin C Brewing for Summer Send-Off, to be held at World's End on Saturday, August 26, 2023, with a rain date of Sunday, August 27, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you both, good luck with the event.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
There's a point of procedure. We should retake that vote. The meeting's a hybrid meeting, which, which requires a roll call vote. Yes, yes, I just thought of that. It's, 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 am I, am I correct?
I thought one of you had to have been remote for it to be needed.
I thought if the meeting was hybrid, in terms of the, the participants on Zoom and the board.
It can't hurt.
I thought, I, I...
Go back to roll call?
Yeah, and then maybe we can have John Coughlin.
Yeah. Sure, I can clarify, but it certainly can't hurt to do it that way.
I think my, my recollection is, is if one of the board members is remote, then we need to do a roll call, but if we're all here, you don't, but there is no harm in...
Yeah, and maybe we could check that, thanks.
Yeah, well, definitely.
All right.
All right, do we want to redo that one?
Yeah.
So, you made the motion, and I seconded it, now we do the vote?
Got it.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. All right, keeping us on track here. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of Bertucci's Restaurants, LLC, 90 Derby Street, for a change of manager. Do we have Sandro De Cruz?
Yes, they're joining us by phone.
Okay.
I can unmute. They may have to press star six. Sandra, if you can hear us, can you unmute or press star six on the phone, please? I can't unmute the phone myself.
Can we, can you go to the next item and then maybe make a phone call?
Okay, all right, we will skip that for, for now. Okay, next on the agenda is the South Shore Country Club Pool Project update. I am going to ask Joe to, as the liaison, to give us an update. Since we are in litigation, we're not going to open it up to public comment.
Yes, so, our litigation counsel has provided the following statement. This is to update the town on the pool project at the South Shore Country Club. As the town has previously reported, the planning board's permits were appealed in the land court by some property owners who live near the South Shore Country Club. The land court process is continuing, and until it concludes, there will be a delay in beginning the construction of the new pool. We will give you a further update once we know more.
Thank you. Okay, I know we're all frustrated by this process, but we are doing everything we can to, to move it along and, and follow the process in front of us. Okay, any luck with Sandro?
It's a landline, so.
Okay.
Can't text the landline.
I tried to text, but it's not working.
Okay, is there any urgency or deadline associated with this?
I don't know, Sharon.
They've already pushed it off for two weeks, so.
I know, yes.
I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, we'll keep going. Next on the agenda is discussion of alternative locations for the senior center. I think, Tom, you're going to kick it off?
I'll, I'll kick it off, and, and I'll initiate, I think we have a PowerPoint that we'll walk through as well. While that's being brought up, Emily can join us at the table.
Excellent, thank Emily.
I'll draw the board's attention to three documents in addition to the PowerPoint in your packets. One is a preliminary trip generation analysis that Emily was able to put together this afternoon, that's in your packet, then we also have a town hall parking analysis as it relates to the town hall property, and then just generally the warrant article from this past town meeting that allowed us to expand the use of the prior appropriation of $525,000 to beyond, to study locate, potential locations for a senior center beyond just the senior center itself, the town hall site. So, with that said, I'm going to bear with me a little bit as we, as we do this, I'm going to initiate conversation, but I have to have, who's running the PowerPoint? You? Or Michelle? Okay, Emily.
Your last guess is always right.
But, so Emily, if you could jump around a little bit and start with slide two, and then, and I'll come back and bring you into yours. So I'm going to initiate conversation on both, on, we have five sites for you all to talk about, and remember, the goal here is to give the town meeting-created, senior center building committee, some guidance on where you think the best sites might be, and that's, and that's kind of the conversation that we're going to have. So I'll start by talking a little bit about the town hall location. So this is the existing location for the senior center here at Two-Town Central Street. It's approximately 5,000 square feet now, with a possible expansion to 15,000 square feet when the police department move over to Route 3A at 335 Lincoln, here in the middle of 2025. So, like I said, there's been some analysis done on this site, this has been the, the, this was thought of as the site for the expansion for a number of, I don't know, years, I guess, and that's now, again, we're looking to expand that to potential other sites, but because it's been considered for a couple of years, a little bit of work had been done. Emily had done a, like I said, a little while ago, a full parking analysis, there's, she was able to put together some site generation discussion today. The senior center building committee has talked about this site, the senior center has talked about this site, the COA, so there's been other discussions, but Emily has put together a zoning analysis for each of these sites, but I'll turn it over to Emily to walk us through the zoning analysis, the zoning analysis for the town hall site now.
Sure, happy to. So you're going to see on each of the particular sites, a chart that shows what the applicable zoning requirements are. What we're trying to do is just identify any particular constraints associated with publicly-owned properties that could potentially be used for a senior center. It'll look redundant, but if you bear with me, I'll identify how some of the zoning affects different properties in different ways. And where you'll see that is mostly at the bottom of the chart, particularly with respect to setbacks. There are certain special requirements in the zoning bylaw that affect public properties a little bit differently. Specifically, Special Requirement 1 to the dimensional standards says that you can't have within 100 feet of a residential district, or 50 feet of a residential district, if the boundary is within the middle of a street, bear with me, any building, structure, parking lot, septic system, et cetera. So depending on what is around each of these public properties, the setback differs somewhat. With respect to town hall, there's a 50-foot setback from the residential district line, which falls within the middle of Central Street and within the middle of Burr Road. So, it's 50 feet from the center of the road. The side property line, which is closest to these residential properties on Sanborn, would be 100 feet, 100-foot setback, because those are residentially zoned. The rear, because of a separate special condition, Special Condition 15, effectively has a zero-foot setback because the property behind us, Cronin Field, is publicly owned, so we basically ignore that, that back property line. Overall, the, you know, the parcel is 6.56 acres, excuse me, so it's, it's sufficiently large, obviously, to support the town hall complex. The current senior center at 5,000 square feet could potentially expand into the police department space, and increase in size to 15,000 square feet, despite the fact that that portion of the building is pre-existing non-conforming. So, this, this structure overall was built in the 1920s, predate zoning, certainly even additions thereto when the property was a school and an exempt use, predate our official and open space zoning, which came into effect in the 1970s thereafter, when it was converted to the town hall complex, the zoning board issued both a parking determination and a certain dimensional requirements, or variances, excuse me, from those Special Requirement 1s. So you'll see parking is within 100 feet of property lines, or 50 feet of residential district bounds, and all of that is okay, and nothing is expected to change. If some of the space were to be converted to a larger senior center use, it would expand the available parking for the senior center from 18 spaces in the front southerly lot to, well, it, it would increase it by 21 spaces by using the police station dedicated lot, in addition to the shared parking spaces around the loop and in the northerly main lots. So, for 160 total.
Okay, do you need to show the zoom out, just so people can see the context?
So this just gives you a quick snapshot of access routes where, you know, each of these facilities is located, in particular Reno Town Hall that we're in right now is centrally located. In the town, some of the amenities that are close by, central fire station is about a half mile, Hingham Square, about three-quarters of a mile, some of these are closer, you Some of these are closer, you know, as you throw a stone or the crow flies, but these are your driving directions, so practically how people would get there. The high school is three-quarters of a mile, the library a mile away, the South Shore Country Club over one and a half miles, along with the West Hingham commuter rail station.
Before leaving this, would it be correct to say that town hall is pre-existing non-conforming? And so the zoning restrictions that you've identified?
Yes.
We can essentially ignore?
Yes, or otherwise authorized by permit.
Right.
Whether that was a special permit or a variance. So if there are actual physical changes that need to happen to the building or the parking lots?
Right.
It may trigger a modification of previously issued permits or finding from the zoning board. But assuming the facility stays in its kind of current configuration, there would be no change. What, you know, the police station is a public building for government use. The senior center would still be a public building for government use, so the use is no different.
And, and one of the factors, particularly for an existing building, that's important is to the extent it's, it's accessible. So does, does this building, is this building accessible?
So Art is probably better equipped as our ADA coordinator to speak to the specifics, but we do have a draft ADA self-evaluation and transition plan for most of our public facilities, including this building. There are certain upgrades that may need to happen. But, you know, we, we at least have identified what those are and, and know our next steps. And then if, for some reason, like a new ramp needed to be constructed within one of those setbacks that we discussed, there are certain exemptions for ADA upgrades.
I mean, just passing on one of the comments I've heard from users of the current senior center is parts of it are not ADA accessible. So we want to make sure that those are addressed, whatever location we ultimately go with. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, as soon as we finalize that, that report, we will be eligible for certain grants as well to help us make those upgrades, so.
Yeah, and I'll just note too, that any existing buildings, or any building for that matter, the architect lodge, you obviously have to take that into account as they design the new space.
Okay.
Bear Cove Park, the next one.
I'm sorry, can I ask you another question?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so the, going back to the town hall, one second. So the biggest, I've heard a couple concerned about this site, but the biggest one I've continually heard is parking. And can you show residents where 100, I mean, to the best of your ability, could you show them where 160 parking spaces would come from?
Do you mind if I, they exist on the ground, I'm just going to stop sharing this?
Yeah, do the best you can, I know your slides aren't right on the...
No, no, I'll stop sharing this screen, and we, I have another that I think will be a little more helpful.
The biggest concern I hear is about the parking and the road that was, you know, the one that the PD uses to get cruisers out. It's like a one-way road, but obviously if cruisers are going out, the other one just waits. And would that cause the building to have to shift to make that into a safe passage for seniors to get back there and, and in and out of the spot? But the number of spots always comes up in conversation.
Yep. Okay. So this information is based on both counts on physical plans, but then physical counts on the property between me and our, our maintenance staff. So in the, the north lots, there's a combined 98 spaces available. Some of those are handicap spaces, some of those, these, these ones closest to the side door are, you know, 15 minutes to encourage turnover, but the number is 98. Along the access drive, we have 23 spaces, spread out on, you know, both sides. Majority on the exterior, the one closest to Central Street, so they don't conflict with the front door, but there's a total of 23. The front senior center lot has 18 spaces. Again, there are some number of handicap spaces there, but 18 altogether. And then the rear, that is right now dedicated to, to the police department, has 21 spaces. So it's a, it's a total of 160.
And I guess, and I guess I'll leave this to Tom and his committee to, to work through it. But what we have now, the 160 we kind of have now, and the 20 in the back is for the police department, so those aren't for the public. That doesn't seem to be working for the current users of the senior center. So I guess, Tom, you know, if we do vote this as a site, I'm sure we will, going forward, I'm wondering if you could look at, you know, how are we going to accommodate a bigger space dedicated to the senior center with really 21 additional parking spaces out back that, that are police department designated? So that's, I think that's probably a, a concern I constantly hear about. I'm sure you worked with your committee.
So Emily, you weren't suggesting that those 160 spots were exclusively for seniors?
No, it's for the town hall complex overall. So when there's certain large events, the assumption is that departments will work together to, to make sure that they're, they aren't coincident. So, you know, the senior center doesn't have 100 people here at the same time as the school department and at the same time as the rec center. And that way, we can continue to share the parking facilities that are available. The analysis that, you know, we did based on both our zoning requirements and IT standards suggests that just the front lot and then what is right now the back police lot would fall within the range of, of what would typically be required for a senior center operation of 15,000 square feet, of what they're, they're suggesting that, you know, they, they could use out of this facility. We've also looked at the potential of squeezing in a few more potentially angled spaces off the, the loop closer to the senior center main lot, or perhaps doing off-site satellite parking for staff or other, you know, certain visitors. So there, there's ways of potentially increasing parking for the complex overall, some of which can be dedicated to this particular use. But also managing it, I guess, actively, so that we're not overburdening the neighborhood.
Okay.
Oh, I have to share it, sorry. I'm looking at it, I'm like, oh.
Okay, so you can go on to Bear Cove Park now, or?
Yep, do you want to go first or the second?
You can stop on the first slide for a second, and then we'll go to the second one in a minute.
Moving.
Oh, no.
You got to say please.
It's, yeah, page down, doesn't work right now. Okay, here we go, sorry.
Here we go. Okay, so just as a, go back one. Just a preliminary conversation. This is, the parcel you're looking at is the entirety of Bear Cove Park. It's a pretty big area, 470-plus acres. Most of it wooded. There is access to water, trail networks, a lot of nature program, programming currently in there, as well as, it's currently managed by the Bear Cove Park Committee. They run road races and do different things throughout the park to keep, to, to keep its use up. So if we were to, to investigate putting a senior center location within Bear Cove Park, I have talked to the National Park Service and their federal-based parks program coordinator, who has told me that in other locations across the northeast where, within her region, they have had parks like this that were old bases, that they have incorporated senior centers into the parks already. So there's precedent for that, and she felt that, we don't have a plan to show her, obviously, but in concept, it made sense to her. So I'll just note that. If you go to the, to the next, to the next page, just real quick, we'll go back and Emily will do her zoning analysis in a second. But just as a, as a, kind of a, a base point for the real discussion, the park, of, of course, is 470 acres, and we would hope that we would be able to extend programming through there if the senior center were in, were in Bear Cove Park. But the actual senior center itself would be located out towards the entranceway of Bear Cove Park Drive. So I numbered here the actively used buildings at the entrance point to the park, which are the vast, there's two other buildings within the, within the base, or within the park. But these are the, these are the ones that I think the, the public has most familiarity with and would be the most likely location. Obviously, Tom and his committee would need to determine this, will be the most likely location for the actual senior center would be in one or more of these buildings. So just real quick, I, where we have number one there, that's currently building 79, that is currently used by the school department for supply storage. Item, or building two is currently used as storage for the fire museum. Three, building three is the model train museum. I don't know if you're familiar with that, I think. The, across the way, down behind the, well, I'd say number five is the, is the fire, is the current fire museum. And then down that access road in the back, kind of hidden down there, is another large building like the others that is currently used for, by the Public Works and HMLP as storage. Building six is currently vacant, it's been deemed unsafe. There were some structural problems there. This is the site where the traces program used to reside. A number of years ago, it was moved out of there for safety purposes. These buildings have not been improved to, to make them safe, so they're actively and currently unsafe for occupation. But if, you know, we would have to remodel, obviously, the entirety of the structure if we were to try to pursue a location there. I'll note that any of these or combination of these buildings are available for discussion as to whether or not a senior center complex as part of a campus-wide network of programming throughout Bear Cove Park, any or all of these are subject to discussion. So just throw it out there.
Okay.
You got to use your imagination on this one.
Can I ask a quick question?
No, do it.
Three is also known as building 80.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Uh, no, building 80 is down in the park. I'm sorry, the, the, it's down, it's way off.
Oh, so 80's not even on this list?
It's not on the list.
Oh, okay, all right, I thought, looking at the map, I thought three was 80. Okay, it's father, because it's fathered.
Yeah, so what you're looking at there, number three, that's right where the gate, the main gate is. That's right where that is.
Makes sense, okay, thanks.
All right, so Emily, want to do zoning analysis on?
Yeah, sure, this will be pretty quick. All of Bear Cove Park and certain adjoining property is zoned official and open space. So we, that special condition one doesn't mostly affect the area of the buildings that Tom just reviewed, with the exception of the southerly ones. If you can see my cursor in this area because of Conservatory Park. So there is a 100-foot setback along these property bounds that's applicable. Quick measurements to those buildings look like they conform. So those exact buildings or, you know, similarly located buildings appear to, you know, they would have the ability to comply with zoning regulations. While there are sensitive areas of the park, obviously AC/EC and wetland areas, none of this particular, where those buildings were cited would be affected by those limitations. In terms of the broader view, and this isn't scanned out all that much, but the, the areas identified, if we measure from Carlson Field, I use for driving directions, you're a third of a mile to the West Hingham Train Station, a half mile to the South Shore Country Club, so it's not just to the entrance, but to the building, 1.1 miles to Hingham Square, 1.9 miles to town hall, and 2.3 miles to the Hingham Shipyard Ferry. And, you know, those kind of area amenities are on top of, obviously, all the amenities that are in Bear Cove Park proper. Walking trails, playing fields, the boat dock, Back River, that you can see in this bottom right-hand corner.
Any questions on Bear Cove Park? Or should I do the others first?
Just, just a general question, is there the assumption that we are limited to these, to the existing structures when we're doing a review?
That's a great question. So the woman from the National Park Service that we met with asked if these were the, if we were looking to build new or if we were going to renew or reuse the historic structures on site. I said, well, what do you think we can do? And she said, well, obviously, there's less impact to the park if you're reusing the existing structures. So, you know, there's that, there's that possibility. She didn't say you couldn't build new. So the other parks, there's precedent that that had happened. So it can be done. I think they prefer less impact on the parks. That's, that's always their goal. But, you know, if, if we're positioning, what the National Park Service wants these parks to be used for is active recreational purposes. So if we're, if we would be positioning a senior center in this location to increase active, active participation in the park through the seniors, you know, I, I've talked with John Young and a few others about, you know, maybe if, if this were a viable location, maybe we talk about getting like a small fleet of golf carts to help seniors get down and, and explore the park and see some of the nature and some of the historical sites that are down there. There's a lot of stuff.
If you do that, you can impose a 25-mile speed limit. Because I know Bill's going to insist on it.
No, it's much slower. Is there any, do they dictate the size if it is, do we have any ideas about that?
She didn't have any, it's such a preliminary conversation for them, without any plans to look at. She's, you know, she didn't want to commit to anything.
Right.
She simply gave us the note that there was precedent, which is hard to walk back once they've allowed it elsewhere.
Right, okay.
One of the concerns, so identifying the map with building one, also known as building 79, is that owned, I'm assuming that's owned by the school department?
It's currently managed by the school department.
Yeah, I know they stores things there, I'm assuming they own it.
I don't know that, it would be, I think we own it, right? The town owns it, but the question of care, custody and control is the most important one.
Yeah, because they store it.
They've always used it, so I'd have to run that to ground with Susan and with Emily and maybe Carol Falvey, and look back at some old articles or old town meeting warrants and, you know, whatever. How, when the town took it from the, took the base, what, what happened then? We'd have to do a little bit more research.
Reason why I bring it up is because its location to the fields, parking already there.
Oh, yeah.
It's right off the main, main drive, drive entrance to the park.
I've always thought that, you know, on the park side, on the baseball field side of that, wouldn't it be great to, you know, blow out a wall, get a glass wall, and then people could sit inside? There'd be bathrooms, concession stands, be able to see and watch the games from the building in the relative comfort of an air-conditioned space for, you know, grandparents or whomever want to come out and watch these things. So, yes, and these buildings are so cavernous, they're so big, you could fit an indoor pickleball courts, indoor basketball in these buildings. So you got to use your imagination a little bit, though, for sure. All right, that's Bear Cove Park. Next, and we have a little bit less information for these next three, so we'll walk through these ones a little bit quicker. This is the selectman's parcel, select board's parcel in our current parlance. But this property has, has been around for a long time. The town has had, over the last many decades, I think, many plans for its use. It's had, it's gone from housing to, I think, affordable housing to general housing. There was even a, was this where the rink was going to go at one point?
Oh, I, I think that was the country club, assisted living was one of the...
Yeah, there's just been a lot of talk about what this property can be used for. Nothing ever fully stuck, at least not yet. But it's certainly a, a property that the town owns and could potentially put a senior center on. It's a 12.6-acre property. You know, a senior center, it would include parking and, 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 I'll let Emily walk through all the zoning benefits, all the zoning realities of this site.
So this site is impacted to some extent by that special condition one. So that relates to the front yard setback specifically. It would be five, excuse me, 50 feet from the center of Beale Street. Otherwise, everything surrounding it is official and open space, so you've got lots of flexibility to cite parking areas or buildings within zoning bounds. I will say the property is affected, again, by AC/EC area of critical environmental concern and wetland resource areas. But we, we got as far in those prior plans as having actual surveys done and wetland flagging. There's still over 10 acres of uplands available. Some of the lot, and, and those are more to the south and east, where there's some lot shape... some lot shape, um, oddities, I guess I would call it, um, but still should be sufficient area to, to locate a senior center if this is a desired site. Um, neighborhood-wise, I didn't go through all the motions of measuring, it's directly adjacent to, um, the, the prior option, um, Bearcove Park, so it's similarly located to those amenities. Uh, it just might have slightly more direct access because it's closer to, you know, Beale Street and you wouldn't have to go down Bearcove Park Drive to get out to Ford Hill.
Okay, we, the, we got two more to, to just kinda sum up for you before you start the conversation. The driving range is next. Uh, this is a site off of Union Street, um, actively used as a private or publicly-owned, uh, driving range.
Yeah.
Well, you always gotta walk out, pick 'em up, come back, do it again, but it's a, uh, it's a, it's a actively used, uh, driving range, uh, down past, if you're coming down Union Street, um, from the square, you gotta go past the, the high school and it's up on your left. Um, it's eleven-point-three acres, we think it's large enough to potentially, you know, house a senior center and, uh, to include parking onsite. So, Emily, you wanna walk through the zoning?
Yep, sure. Um, this one is, again, affected by special condition one, this property to the east, excuse me, is, um, residentially zoned, so there'd be a hundred-foot setback from, um, this side property line. Um, the front property also is opposite residential, um, residential district, so it would be fifty feet from the center of Union Street. Otherwise, lots of flexibility because, um, on, on these two sides of the property, we also have official and open space, um, land. There are some wetland floodplain limitations, particularly down in this corner, um, but, you know, as you can see from where the driving range is sighted, there's plenty of upland area to be able to cite a building and associated parking.
Okay, and then the last one was the, this is a National Guard Armory site on Central Street, so this is adjacent to the Lincoln School Apartment, uh, complex. The town doesn't actively own it right now, but, um, it is a site that is adjacent to a senior, a town-owned senior center, uh, senior housing facility. Um, it's about, uh, acre and a, a little less than an acre and a half, uh, total lot size. Um, we might have some trouble, uh, with the parking onsite, but, um, it's something for your consideration. Emily, you wanna walk through the zoning?
Yeah, we, actually, before I get to the zoning, I'll just note that, you know, as we all are familiar, this is a fantastic location, so it's not far from Town Hall, just over a half-mile, um, it's a point three miles to Hingham Square, uh, not too far, it's the closest to the bathing beach at one point two miles, same distance to the country club and the library. Um, the challenges with this site do really come into play with zoning, um, unless the existing facility were to be rehabilitated to become a senior center. Um, any new construction or, um, significant reconstruction of, of this particular building, um, would likely trigger variances, um, because everything around it is residentially zoned. The entire width of the property is less than two-hundred feet and you're supposed to have a hundred-foot setback from both sides. Again, that is, you know, that affects the building as well as parking areas. Um, so from a regulatory standpoint, it's a, you know, it's a little more limited. Practically speaking, as Tom mentioned, it may be difficult to fit the amount of parking spaces onsite, um, that you'd want to support a fifteen-thousand, twenty-thousand-square-foot facility.
Great. So, just to summarize, you've got, uh, five potential, or five locations for your consideration, uh, Town Hall, the Bearcove Park, uh, site, you've got the Selectmen's Parcel, over on, Select Board Parcel, over on Beale Street, um, or off of Beale Street, and then you've got the Driving Range on Union Street and the, uh, National Guard Armory on Central Street.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Tom, thank you, Emily, for the presentation. Um, and just to kind of re-center us, um, you know, we wanna have a discussion about the best options of these potential sites so that we can give some guidance to the Senior Center Building Committee, um, who, again, is a town meeting-formed committee, not a select board committee, so they will move forward, um, as they see fit, but we wanted to help give some guidance, cause there are lots of options, um, and I think speed is of the essence for all of us. We want this to move as quickly as possible. Certainly, we wanna find the best location, but this is not a project that, that we want to slow down because we're analyzing hundreds of locations. Um, so, and, and as Tom mentioned, uh, before, this is the money that town meeting appropriated to do this sort of feasibility study so that we can move forward with, with the best spots and the best design.
Let, just one last note that I forgot to mention earlier.
Sure.
Um, just one thought as you're, as you're considering this, there's five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars available for, for, uh, some, for someone to come in and help us with feasibility and preliminary design and, and the like. Um, the more sites we do, the less far that money takes us in terms of analyzing each of the sites. So, just bear that in mind as you have your conversation.
Excellent, thank you. Joe, do you wanna start with thoughts or questions?
Um, do we wanna do it site by site and then we each talk about them, or, um, that might be?
Sure, kind of pros and cons of each site, okay.
Yeah, I mean, starting with Town Hall.
Yep.
Um, that is the site that we all initially thought of when we said, "Let's, let's get the, uh, the police out of there, have their own site, and then we'd be able to expand there." Um, I think Bill hit the nail on the head in terms of parking. Um, the, the dissatisfaction, to the extent there is dissatisfaction, is, is there adequate parking? Um, and I know that there have been parking studies, uh, the seniors that I've spoken to are not convinced that there's gonna be adequate parking, and so I think, to the extent that we move forward with, with Town Hall, that needs to be resolved soon, uh, because we're not, I, in my view, we should not proceed, uh, with Town Hall and then at the end say, "Oops, well, there's not adequate parking." Um, so, uh, I don't know the best way to make that happen, um, but I think, uh, I always thought that we would be moving forward with Town, with Town Hall. In fact, uh, when this first came up, there was a meeting, uh, at the senior center and there were, big meeting, and it was overwhelming that the folks wanted to stay here, I mean, because of the central location. Um, but, uh, we really need to make sure that, that the parking issue was, was resolved. I think any other issue, uh, if there's zoning issues, uh, accessibility issues, those can all be managed, but the parking, I think, is, is paramount.
Agreed.
The, the parking issue and also the, to get to the additional police utilized parkings in terms of that roadway that the cruisers used to exit, I mean, that's, with, as a bill, the building's gonna have to be moved, right? To make that a safe two-way road to get back to those additional parking spots would require some sort of a structural, structural change to the building, which could impact square footage, right? So, that's another concern with it. Um, the oth- the other concern, um, is that I've heard is whether or not the amount of square, of square footage in the building as proposed is gonna accommodate the growth of our senior population going forward. So, you know, our senior population's gonna grow pretty significantly next five to ten years, and will that facility be enough to accommodate, um, all of our residents who would like to use that facility after it's built out and new? So, I mean, that's the two concerns I heard, was the parking and, and growth opportunities within the existing or proposed footprint. But, I, I think we should keep it on the list. I know Tom's two years into it and the committee's two years into it, I think it should be one of the three, um, going forward.
I agree. Um, this was the original intention, we've been talking about this location for a number of years and was part of the plan with the new public safety facility, so I don't want to disregard that work that's already been done. Um, and I think there are people that would like it to be in Town Hall, it is a nice location, um, near Lincoln School Apartments, near downtown, um, but, uh, the concerns I've heard are also parking and, um, can it be renovated enough? Is it going to feel like an old school or an old police station? Are there gonna be leaks? So, I think that, you know, that is what this feasibility study will tell us, yes, it can, it, it has to be ADA compliant, that is non-negotiable, so that, that's what I think this process will, will inform us on. Um, I know the parking study says there are enough spots, um, I would hope that during this kind of due diligence, we can be creative about where the parking spots are, if the police car spots are too narrow or too difficult, perhaps that's where staff parks, right? There's other ways to think about it, um, as well as satellite parking, and maybe we invest in more vans and, and we're picking up seniors. Um, so I think, I think there's options there, I s- even though there are some cons, I, I do think Town Hall location should stay.
And Emily, uh, in terms of satellite parking, um, you and I have discussed that, that the options that are available on town land, uh, that, where we could have, um, staff parking and that would really free up additional parking at Town Hall, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that should really be brought to the committee's attention.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Particularly locations where there's already walking paths that are accessible with lighting, um, so they're, they're safe routes, right?
And, and, you know, one of the things, and I don't know to what extent it affects this discussion, is timing. I mean, this building is here, um, we're not talking about new construction, and so, yeah, I don't know if we're, if, uh, you know, if new construction adds on additional two, three year, I, I don't know, but, uh, the sooner, the sooner the better in terms of having a, a senior center from my perspective.
Absolutely. All right, wanna talk about Bearcove? Bill, you wanna go first?
I, I like, I like the idea of looking at Bearcove a lot. I think it's, I think it's something that, um, something that we should definitely put on the list and we should explore it. Uh, the seniors are, are excited about the opportunities, you know, whether or not one of these older buildings comes to fruition, I don't know, but certainly I think we should continue to look at it and explore it. There's a lot of opportunity there, as Emily pointed out, so I, I'm, I'm all for keeping Bearcove on the list.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, I'm excited about this as, as an opportunity. Um, it's not clear to me whether the committee needs to be limited to the existing structures. Um, again, that may facilitate in terms of timing, um, but, uh, if there is a better location, that should absolutely be, be explored. Um, and, uh, my expectation is that we, we would be able to work with whatever governmental entity, either state or federal, uh, to make it happen, so, um, I, I, I am excited about this as a location.
I agree. I like the Bearcove Park location a lot, um, and I would, I'd like the study to be able to tell us if the, if the park is a good location and where in the park, and if we can use one of the, the existing buildings. Um, but I love the proximity to not only the park but also the country club. Um, I hope that we think about this more holistically, everything doesn't have to happen within the four walls of, of the, the senior center. Um, certainly, the country club offers quite a bit, um, for seniors, uh, with the golf course and, and pool eventually, so, um, that's, you know.
I knew you were gonna go there.
Well, I think that's, that's, that's nice for, uh, just another facility that can be part of the programming. Um, so, Bearcove is, is definitely a top one for me.
Yeah.
All right, Select Board's Parcel on to Beale Street. Wanna start, Joe?
So, I, I also think this is a, a good location. Um, it's not clear to me where the entrance would be, um, for access, um, so, for example, if the entrance was on, on West Street, um, at one of those locations or coming off of Bearcove Park Drive, it would then have virtually, not virtually, it'd have very little impact on, on Beale Street. Um, so it depends on where the traffic would be coming from. Um, I th- I mean, this is already a fairly busy, um, location, um, but I, I would wanna explore this.
Bill?
So, I'm opposed to the use of Beale Street, and I'm gonna, um, go over my reasons for using that, um, for my objection to it. Uh, first of all, Beale Street is, is one of the, um, most well-traveled streets in the entire town. Um, there are major traffic concerns with that actual street. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I asked the police department to provide me with data with respect to that street. They told me in the last several years, there were fourteen major accidents on that street. Uh, police, the police officers have issued over ten citations and given at least four verbal warnings. The issue with, uh, Beale Street continues that, um, the traffic is so bad on that street, and Joe, you may remember this, that as part of an application, maybe about six, seven years ago, the zoning board ordered speed bumps put in.
Yep.
Down past, um, Lynch Field and over, you know, where the, um, the car, car place is now, um, those speed bumps were put in there, you might've even been on the panel, as a means of slow people down into, as a traffic calming measures, and they were completely ineffective because of the high volume of traffic. They were so bad to the point where the town, the select board ordered them removed because they were doing nothing to, um, help the residents of Beale Street address those traffic concerns. It got even worse to the point where an overwhelming among a number of residents went to a traffic committee meeting at the time, um, my friend Taylor Mills was the chief of police, and pleaded with him to reduce traffic on Beale, uh, speed on Beale Street. He didn't really know what to do, but he agreed to put up speed signs that said twenty-five miles per hour, even though they weren't enforceable. But if you go to Beale Street, cars, you do tomorrow morning, you're gonna see twenty-five-hour signs that I, you know, the DPW created, that were unenforceable, and the chief said to the residents, "We can't enforce it, but I hear you, we're gonna try to help you out." That didn't really help. When the Cove was permitted, uh, several years ago, um, at the time of the permitting of the Cove, there was discussion amongst our predecessors on this board and, um, other people who have, you know, done this job, and there was definitely no formal agreement, there was definitely no formal discussion, but my understanding is, talking with some of our predecessors, that there was, uh, an agreement that if the parcel was to be developed, it would be developed for a lower intensity use. I would submit to you that a senior center is a very high intensity use. The intersection of North and Be- we talked with JR tonight about dangerous intersections in town, he mentioned two, I'm gonna add a third one, North Street and Beale Street. I travel that intersection almost daily. Those cars are backed up maybe about a hundred, hundred-and-fifty yards off of that intersection. To get out of that intersection is extremely dangerous. When the Green Bush Line is coming through and traffic is moving and stopped and lights are flashing, creates even more of a danger. The parcel is very close to that intersection, and I think it would be, uh, a disaster to put hundreds of more cars potentially, even if the dri- even if the access point is not on Beale, to traverse that road up and down Beale, we would be doing a tremendous service to the residents of Beale Street, but also to the seniors who wanna get to their senior center, who would have to go through that intersection that I mentioned, that I go through every day, and I don't know how the residents who live close to that intersection actually get out of the driveways. More importantly, for the past cou- for the past year or so, um, myself, Art and Tom have been working with a group in town, some of them are here, um, kinda led by Warren Pelsier, I see him on the call as well, who have been putting forth tremendous efforts to find, um, a spot for housing for adults with disabilities. We have been zeroing in on that parcel for a lot of different reasons, because it's closely located to the train, it's located, located to downtown. That use that we are talking about at this point, again, it's preliminary, would probably be for maybe six to eight residents. But I can tell you, the people involved with this project are bringing a tremendous passion to the project, a tremendous commitment to the project. We have talked about other sites. I don't think anyone's better than this one, and I don't think we could really accommodate the future residents in a better way than using that parcel to do it. Um, I've been working with them maybe about fifteen months, they've been at it for about five years. We're starting to move forward with the project, um, state funding is becoming available. I have a personal background of working with adults with disabilities, and I can tell you, it's, it's very, very important, um, to their families and to them to have an opportunity to provide independent living, um, for their children. So, we haven't made a commitment as a board that we would use this parcel for that purpose, but I feel personally invested. But I feel personally invested to the point where I would vote against using Beale Street.
Okay. I am, before having that information, open to this property because we own it. And, you know, I think it's, it's worth doing the due diligence. I certainly don't see it as a, a good fit as town hall or Bear Cove. I'd much rather see Bear Cove Park than this, just given the proximity to the park as well as the existing structures there. So this would be kind of at the bottom of the list for me. But certainly, you know, there are other uses that are being discussed. Affordable housing has, has been in discussions for years in this, in this part of, of town and this parcel as well. So this wouldn't be a top priority for me for the senior center.
I mean, Bill, my recollection is that the portion of Beale Street that was at issue was much further down towards, you know, Stop and Shop. And this location, basically where it hits West Street, was not, there was no traffic calming measures there. This was not the area that was, that was focused on by the zoning board. To the extent that this would impact, I mean, I think we would need to see if, if this would really have an impact on it. Because if it would, then I, I agree with you. And I think that this location pales beside the Bear Cove Park location. So I, I, I get that analysis. Okay.
All right.
Nothing else.
Okay. All right, next is the driving range on Union Street. Want to start, Joe?
Yeah, so this one, I, I'm opposed to. I think it's the only place I know of in Hingham where you can go and hit golf balls for free. And I do go by it, and it's used quite frequently. And I also know that the town has a real commitment to open space and to tree preservation, both of which would be materially affected i- if we were to turn this into a, a senior center. I, I'm not sure how the location works in terms of its proximity to the high school. There may be benefits. There may be problems in terms of driving and parking. But a- as a general rule, to me, this is, this one fell to the bottom because of the impact on, on open space and, and trees. And quite frankly, I did an informal poll among my acquaintances and they all, they all said they would stand up at town meeting and oppose this. There's, there was not one person who, who thought that the sacrifice would be worth it in terms of getting rid of the driving range. So this, this is not an area that I would support.
Bill?
I, I've seen very few golfers down there. I don't know, maybe, so maybe I haven't, I mean, I don't go down Union Street a lot.
I do, and I've never seen it not being used.
Okay. I mean, I, I go down Union Street usually in the afternoons when my kids have sports down there or when I go to games at high school. I, I've never seen a high intensity use for golfers there. Most golfers that I know that want to drive, they go to the country club and they drive off of there. So the golfing issue wouldn't be a concern for me. The capacity of Union Street to handle a lot of traffic may. But I, I've read some, see, I heard from some leaders in the senior community who were pushing me to use that site. And I told them, "We can't. It's owned by the school department." Then we found out a couple of months ago that actually we own it.
Right.
There was a little, little concern about it. My, my only one concern, and I was going to ask, forgot to ask Emily's question when she presented, but there, there's an intermittent stream that runs along Union. Are there any conservation restrictions to that, to developing that parcel?
So I'm not 100% sure how it qualifies, but if it's subject to the Rivers Protection Act, then you would have a 200-foot setback from it. When I, when I looked, there was floodway area, so I assume that's the, the same stream that you're referring to. If it's designated floodway, I assume it actually qualifies as a river. And beyond where that was for more than 200 feet, I recall, there were also wetland resource areas. So that whole, you wouldn't be able to cite anything close to what I believe we're both referring to.
Okay. This location, I have seen people there. I don't have any hard data on how many. I have no idea how many people use it on a daily or annual basis. I incorrectly assumed that the school, high school golf team used it, and they do not. So I, I would consider it, but I don't, I don't like it as much as, again, town hall or Bear Cove. I think it's, it's just not as accessible. There is traffic on Union Street and obviously lots of students driving to the lot just a little bit further on the left. So it's kind of my least favorite in terms of accessibility and, and just getting, getting in there and parking for the senior population.
Although it's right across from Hornster Farms, so you get milk delivery if you.
They don't have ice cream there. I've tried.
I know.
They don't have ice cream.
So I mean, I, I will say I, I'm not a golfer, but I do see people using it every day this summer. It's not been a day that I've seen it unused.
Yeah.
And again, I'm unaware of any other location in Hingham where you can hit golf balls for free. And I'd hate to, to lose that opportunity in the town.
Okay. And then the last one for discussion is National Guard Armory. Want to start, Bill?
Yeah, so obviously I love the idea of it, but we don't own the building. And I don't think we're going to own the building anytime soon. So I mean, I, I would love, if we owned this building or we were close to signing a deal with the state to get this building, I would be 100% for it. I think it's a great location. It's, you know, I, you know, tactically located downtown. It'd be wonderful for seniors to, to, you know, go downtown, come back to the senior center. So I would love that. But having been in discussions with the, with the National Guard now about three years, we've had very little movement on this. And the current leadership, I mean, we had a meeting, I think, what, in January, Art, was it? Art, we met with Major General Keefe, who's the general in charge of the guard. He was very enthusiastic about the town acquiring it in exchange for another property that we own. But then that meeting ended and this, we, we reached out to the state follow-up. Nothing really happened. He, he will be, assumedly he will be replaced by the new governor. So we're going to have a new general in charge of the guard. We don't know if she or he will be as interested in, in working with us as General Keefe was. I just, I don't, I just, I would hate to have this committee study the feasibility of a site. That's never going to happen. It's, I hate to say that, it might be a waste of their time to say, "Well, if we were to own this, it would be great." But we don't, and we're not going to own it anytime soon.
I mean, I think the only reason to keep this on the site is if there was a reasonable likelihood that we would be owning it soon. And I know you've been involved in the discussions directly, so I'm taking it your assessment is that's not.
I mean, we, the, the needle hasn't moved much at all, and it's not, not on our side. We're eager, we, there's a lot of great uses for this building. Addition, you know, in addition to the Lincoln School Apartments, some more affordable housing opportunities. Be fantastic for the town, but the, the guard is just moving really slow and I, I just don't think. And if we want to get the senior go, senior center up in a couple of years, I just don't see this as a possibility. That, that's just my read on it. It's going very slowly.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think we have the time or budget to study this site when it's not a town-owned property. This, I see best case scenario, it's five plus years out. Absolute best case scenario, maybe closer to 10. So although I like the proximity to downtown and Lincoln School Apartments, I don't think it's feasible for this project timeline.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, I will open it up to members of the public. Questions or comments? Anybody in the room will go to first? Clark, do you mind just coming up and stating your name and address for the record?
Clark Frazier, 50, Bonnie Brier Circle in Hingham. I just came in for another reason, but I walked in the middle of this. Now a chance to talk about Beale Street. There are two observations. Number one, it is a dangerous street to drive on for seniors because it's very dark and there are no lines on the edges. But there are also, I'll point out that there's a railroad right-of-way that used to go to the shipyard. And it would be, if you were going to do that, that railroad right-of-way should be, if you own it, converted to a pedestrian bicycle path. And you could actually connect then, uh, West Street with the shipyard. I, I don't know why that's not on anybody's radar to do that. The other observation about Beale Street is the sidewalk is on one side and it crosses in a couple of different places. And we don't maintain those crosswalks well enough. So, but I, as, you know, having senior, never gone to a senior center except the one in Cohasset, it would be nice to have a, a nice one in Hingham that is close to where a lot of people live and could get to on foot.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments or questions from people in the room? No? Okay. Online? I think I see Christine. Hi Christine, go ahead. Or state your name and address, please.
Hi everyone. Christine Smith, Duke Parker Circle. Thanks for the presentation. Just curious, I missed the beginning of it. How did you select the five alternate sites? Two of the things that, that come to mind are the light plant, overall of Cushing, that I know is a surplus property, and I keep hearing about the South Shore Country Club. So I'm wondering if that was considered, just, you know, sort of how you went about making those decisions for the five alternate sites?
So I had a number of conversa, one more, take that one.
Sure, yes, please.
A number of conversations with each individual board member. And these were the five that, that were brought up to me. I could say that the 308 Cushing Street property, the old light plant, as you say, is, is too small. That wouldn't allow, that wouldn't allow us to build a, building large enough and be able to park it. So that site is not large enough. And then the, the South Shore Country Club, as you know, I think Christine, has significant parking issues right now without adding another, need for another 80 or so parking spaces on site there.
Okay. And so, so, but it does sound like the board really has a preference for using existing building sites. Because I know, I think Hingham did a surplus property assessment, I feel like we do those every few years as a, as part of master planning. So it's not that you're looking at, you know, sites that we already own.
Yes.
I think that's a priority, probably for the township too.
Definitely. Yeah, we've evaluated all town-owned properties in, in general and then looked at what would be suitable in, in terms of size for this project. But certainly in terms of budget and timeline, properties we own are, I think, the best, the best path forward.
Great, so the guidelines are important.
Yes. Sorry, Christine, did you have another comment?
No, and other than I know that Bill was the one that said timeline, I know the seniors have been waiting for a long time. It's nice to see this, you know, some progress on, on seeing this project, you know, become a reality.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. All right, so we are, we want to come up with a list. How many do we want to? I think we are all in agreement on town hall and Bear Cove.
And I think we're in agreement that if there's not a reasonable likelihood that town's going to own the, the Armory.
Right.
That it's not worth pursuing.
Not to include. So do we want to include the select boards parcel and/or the driving range, or limit it to two?
So with respect to Beale Street, I mean, I, I'm hearing some real concerns.
Yes.
And I think the decision before us is, is whether or not we should encourage the committee to, to, to look at it or not. I mean, I have not reviewed that work. It sounds like, Bill, you really have. And it sounds like your assessment is, is, it's not worth even considering. Is that?
Well, for the reasons I cited. I mean, so, I mean, again, I think that, that Beale Street itself, the Beale Street corridor is, is traffic congested. I think that dangerous is, is, I think the intersection is pretty dangerous. Again, I travel it every day, but I think maybe more importantly, you know, the work that, you know, I've been doing, that we've been doing with the group of residents looking to create housing for disabled adults. And I don't know of any other place in town that would better fit the needs of those residents than that parcel. Given, again, given this location to the train, given the proximity to downtown. I'd also note, as I said earlier, what's being envisioned would be a housing unit for about six to eight people. So the intensity of use would be a lot lower than a senior center that, I hope, is going to be used by a significant amount of residents. I would be concerned about using the parcel for those reasons.
Agreed. I, I think I'm leaning towards just limiting it to two, but do you want to leave the driving range on there? I know you weren't, you didn't love the driving range. What do you think, Bill?
I, I like the driving range better than Beale Street obviously, as you maybe can draw that inference. But, you know, if you have those concerns, Joe, then we can take it off and limit it to those two.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the two.
Okay.
And, and I would note too, I mean, Christine brought this up, and she made a good point. You know, you all remember this, we were looking at the Foster School. People were like, "Why are you building that giant school behind the existing school?" Well, because we don't own a lot of land that where we could build a giant new school in North Hingham to, to, to serve those residents. And even with the senior center, we've looked at all of our, per the town warrant article, we've looked at all of our inventory. What do we have in our inventory that's going to accommodate a state-of-the-art senior center that all of us want to exist for the next 200 years, you know? And we don't have a lot of options, other than the, the five or six we've talked about this evening.
Right.
But I will tell you, a lot of, you know, seniors I've spoken with really like, they were very excited about looking at Bear Cove Park. And a lot of them like town hall too. It's kind of a split.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, and I think Tom's point of not, not splitting the revenue and splitting the time and effort over too many locations is, is a really valid one. So I think, I think the two we've identified are the top two. And I, I'm comfortable moving forward on that basis.
Yes. Well, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Emily, for doing all of this work. I certainly thought it was important to go through this process and have this discussion. So thank you for your patience while we deliberate on it.
There's one more comment.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Amy, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Amy Farrell, 95 Central Street. And this may be a topic for another meeting agenda, but my understanding is that the select ones parcel had actually been considered for affordable housing in the past. And I, I do appreciate the sensitivity to traffic on the Beale Street corridor. But I do think we have, you know, folks have expressed a real need for housing and housing choices. So I, I hope that when the ultimate decision to, you know, use that parcel is considered, you know, we consider some density and, you know, we mitigate impact for residents, but we consider, you know, access through Bear Cove perhaps. But I just, I want to throw that up there as a suggestion and something to consider. And I appreciate it's not necessarily part of this meeting's agenda.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, yeah, I think my preference at this point is to limit it to the two. I'd rather have more work done on, on these two and feel like we have really good answers to move in a path forward from this study as opposed to kind of diluting it with, with too many sites. Tom, did you want to add anything or? All right, I'm ready to take a motion then, if you are.
So I'm ready, but I, I want to be clear that when we talk about Bear Cove Park, it's the location, it's the entire location. We're not limiting it to the existing buildings. It may turn out that's where it's going.
Correct.
But the recommendation is, is the location.
Yes.
So with that, I move to advise the senior center building committee to evaluate the following sites as the potential location. following sites as the potential location for the Hingham Center for Active Living, also known as the senior center. And that would be, A, the Town Hall location and B, the Bear Cove Park location.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion and the feedback. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is FY24 Community Preservation Grant Agreements. And we have CPC Chair Julie Straley with us. Thanks, everybody.
So, Julie, I thought you were here for AdCom. I wasn't thinking that.
No, my days on AdCom are over.
What is, what are we waiting for, for the...
Sandra? I don't think he's on.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay. Do you want to...
Sure, all right. So, the reason why I'm here tonight is every year when town meeting approves funding for Community Preservation Act grants, there is something that's drawn up and it's, it's a grant agreement. And it's just an agreement between the, the grantees and the town, either the town administrator signs it or the select board, depending on the dollar amount, and the CPC. And it's agreement that it's going to be a project timeline of two years, if possible, and, and lays out other parameters such as the grantees are going to check in with the CPC two times a year, just to let us know how things are going. And there's some information about procurement process and it's just a legal document. So, anyway, I'm here tonight because there are five grant agreements that fall into the over fifty thousand dollars that we would need a select board signature.
Yes, and these are all projects and dollar amounts that were approved at town meeting?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Do you have any questions, Joe?
Yeah, so, has legal counsel reviewed and approved this, the document?
Yes, legal counsel helps draw up the documents and does that every year, so. And I'll note that the grant agreements this year, the general template was updated by legal counsel because the CPC had some feedback and town council just went through everything to make sure that the document was the best version that we would put forward, so. It's, it's a, it's a good document.
Excellent.
No other questions?
Do you have any questions, Bill?
No questions, thanks for waiting, Joe.
I know, thank you for your patience.
Interesting.
It was a good discussion. I'll just note that the, the project or the grant recipients have all signed these already, as well as yourself as chair.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm ready to take a motion.
I make a motion authorize the chair of the select board to sign the FY24 Community Preservation Committee grant agreements as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
For all your work this past year and all you're doing this summer, too.
We're in really good shape for the coming year.
We are.
We've done a lot of updates to our documents and things like that, so.
Yes.
We're in good shape.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is appointments. We have an appointment for...
I make a motion to appoint Nick Michelle to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
So, do we know what, which slot is being filled?
It's a family member of someone with a disability.
Okay, great. Second.
A roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none. Next is town administrator and select board report. Ooh, sorry. Can't really see.
Michael Sato?
Michael, go ahead. Can you state your name?
Yeah, my name is, yeah, yeah, sorry. I just took a second to come off. Good evening, my name is Michael Statham, 34 Rockwood Road, and I am attending tonight to try to figure out what the status of the sale of the town property at 32 Rockwood Road that was approved at the town warrant in April of this year, May of this year, to just figure out what's going on with that.
Michael, this is Tom. Why don't I have your number? I'll call you in the morning.
Sounds good, thank you so much, Tom.
You bet.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions from members of the public? Okay. Art, do you want to go ahead?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Michelle?
Sure, just one thing. I've been focused on evaluating different options for budgeting software for us to use this fall. I think we've narrowed it down to two. We're doing some training, some demos this week, and I've been talking to a number of other communities who's, who use both of them. So, we should have a path forward by the end of the week, which is exciting. Exciting for finance nerds like me.
Yes, perfect.
That is exciting for all of us because it's something we really need, so thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for doing that. Tom?
I have a couple, but only if you guys aren't, you have got to talk about the suicide awareness.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, this past Sunday, Joe and I were able, and Michelle, were able to attend the suicide awareness event down at Bear Cove Park. It was very well attended by, by the general public, but also by a lot of, a large contingent of people that were very concerned about that topic. So, it was nice. Keith German did a great job organizing it, as always, and it was great to get that level of awareness out there. That might have actually been two Sundays ago, but anyway. And I also don't want to step on your toes if you want to talk about the police.
No, please do, yeah.
So, Liz and Art and Michelle and I had the, the benefit of being here for the swearing-in ceremony for three new police officers in town, John Crenier and Gina McCarthy and Justin Worth, all appointed by you all, have now been through the academy and have now been sworn in and are out on the street protecting us all as we speak. So, congratulations to them.
Yes, congratulations and thank you. We, it was wonderful to see them and their families. We're certainly grateful that they chose Hingham as the place to serve. Bill?
Yeah, I do have one announcement to make. Diane Denapoli is leading an effort called Flower Power. It's a grassroots effort to address a global issue to support veterans. She asked me to point out some thanks to some people who've been supporting her effort. Danielle at the Swap Shop for helping to find vases for the arrangements that were used. A big thank you to the anchor Carol Meyer and Keith German for kicking off the campaign and a thank you for every one in the community who's donated to the campaign to help veterans believe. Some supporters include the Fruit Center, the Mad Hatter and Waymouth. Together, over twelve hundred dollars has been raised and all this money will go to assist veterans with food insecurity.
Yes, she's been doing a great job. Thank you, Diane, and thank you, everyone that's participated and donated. Joe?
Just briefly, just following up on Tom's comment about the suicide awareness event, which focused on veterans, but it's an issue that transcends veterans. And so, the town has committed its resources to make sure that there is an awareness of the issue and that it's something that we're not ignoring. And then this past Saturday was the farmer's market day proclaimed by this board. It was incredible attendance at the farmer's market and thanks to Mark Collins, his group have, Mark always says it's not just him, but he's put so much into this, so it's been a tremendous success. And so, congratulations to all who participate in the farmer's market.
Yes. On this Saturday, there's also another farmer's market, as well as Summer Fest. So, unfortunately, that had to be rescheduled because of rain, but hoping for good weather this Saturday in downtown Hingham. There's gonna be food and Untold Brewery and live music. So, hope to see everybody downtown on Saturday. And that's it. Take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at 8:20.